I'd like to call this meeting of the Princeton City Council order. Third, call the roll.
Mayor Mabry.
Here.
Councilmember Newman.
Here.
Gomez.
Here.
McCall.
Here.
McCransky.
Would you please stand and join us in the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as the Constitution of this world, with the ready of justice for all. Glad to have a nice turnout tonight. We're going to go ahead and now move to the oath of office, and Pete Nelson, our city clerk, is going to administer that for the two firefighters.
Can you start with Stefan? Raise your right hand. Ayes, Stefan Marquin.
Ayes, Stefan Marquin.
Having been appointed to the office of firefighter paramedic.
Having been appointed to the office of firefighter paramedic.
In the city of Princeton.
In the city of Princeton.
County of Bureau.
County of Bureau.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of firefighter paramedic.
Of the office of firefighter paramedic.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, bag, right. Look. You want to come, you want to come up here?
No, look good.
So you've been preparing for this all day? Is Mr. Carrington in the crowd? There he is. Okay, Richard Adahan.
I, Brian Carrington.
I, Brian Carrington.
Having been appointed to the office of deputy fire chief.
Having been appointed to the office of deputy fire chief.
In the city of Princeton.
In the city of Princeton.
And in the county of Bureau.
County of Bureau.
And state of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Of America. And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of deputy fire chief.
Of the office of deputy fire chief.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Would you like to have some pictures taken with your, uh, with your friend?
Sure.
Here we go. I don't know, would you like some pictures taken real quick with your family? You're good.
Does the family want to kind of stand up here and get a picture with the, uh, lottery?
They're no extra charge.
So was that again?
No, dress fine.
Look good.
Looks like you're good.
Okay, well, we're very proud of the fire department and EMTs. You guys look sharp and, uh, very professional group led by our chief and our, I call assistant chief, so congratulations on your appointment, Brian. Again, a very professional group. You make the community look sharp, and we appreciate everything you do. At this point, we continue our meeting, so we always like to tell people that are here for special cases like this, if you want to leave, that's fine, otherwise you can stick around for a meeting. You're not offending us if you have to leave. So you want to see me out here, go for it. Okay, very good. So, uh, it's quite an honor to have that this evening, and just because they lead, uh, we're never offended by that, so now we're kind of back town to the meeting gallery, so speaking a positive way. So if we could, we're going to go ahead and go to public comment. Is there anyone here tonight that has any public comment? We offer public comments at the beginning of the meeting as well as towards the end. Okay, seeing none, we'll go, we'll go to the minutes for the regular council meeting.
I wonder whether we approve the minutes from our regular council meeting on June 5th, 2023?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any comments? Seeing none, third call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Mabry.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is the invoices. In the Department of Accounts and Finances for this period, we have invoices totaling In the Department of Public, uh, Streets of Public Improvement, we have invoices totaling In the Department of Public Safety, we have invoices totaling $309,669.89. And in the Department of Public Property and Utilities, we have invoices totaling For a grand total of $1,752,530.30. There, all council members present have confirmed reviews of all invoices and are submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve the invoices as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, third call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Mabry.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is, uh, ordinance O-23-009. This is the first reading for, uh, an ordinance amending the commencement time of regular meetings of the city council to 6:00 PM effective on July 17, 2023. There, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we advance ordinance O-23-009 to the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? I think it's all pretty straightforward. We're excited about the fact that we will be starting our meetings effective July 17 at 6:00 PM. As I always tell people, don't worry, we're not going to extend it out faster or longer than what we originally were before, but we're going to have some good content this summer and fall with our meetings. Okay, we have a motion and a second, um, no discussion, third call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor, uh, Mayor Mabry.
That's okay.
Aye. Two more meetings, we'll have that on my table.
That's all right, we're good. Very good. Okay, now we go to the standing entrance report with Teresa, please.
If you want to turn to your, uh, monthly reports from Blatterbock, uh, this is actually April 23rd, so don't be confused on that. So this is basically wrapping up the end of last fiscal year, um, as of April, so there will still be some adjustments to these numbers, but as you can see on the right-hand column of page one, you'll see where the revenues and expenditures are hitting close to the hundred or a little bit above or a little bit below. Uh, disposal revenue, number three, you'll see is a little bit out of whack there, uh, with 50% of the expenditures, that's because the money was set aside for the garbage trucks. Obviously, we haven't paid for those yet, um, however, that money will remain there for the trucks when they can't anything look there. So, um, that one kind of skews the numbers a little bit, but, uh, you want to go to Uh, eight, for the sales tax. I always like to look at this page as we happen. Um, we can look from one month to the next, and sometimes it looks like the numbers are going down, but you want to compare it to years before. So if you look at the April column, you'll still see that probably pink line is still hitting above where we were last year, so continually we've hit that over the previous year's mark, so that's always good. Um, hotels, those kind of fluctuate a little bit, but I guess what I'd say there is we're holding steady with those. Um, on page 11, I just want to point out with the investment maturities that we're starting to see, we always have the list of our CDs listed here, but you'll start to see in the interest rate column as we're switching some of these, as these CDs are coming due, we're switching them to a new one, and the numbers are significantly higher for the investments, so you'll start to see some, some gain there, a little bit more, you're starting to hit the 3% and the 4% of those. Um, on page 12, uh, the BuCom total call numbers, uh, almost 5,500 for that month their total. Um, that is up, I went back and wanted to look at last year's numbers. Last year's number at the, at, for that month was only about 2,000 total, so there's been a significant jump. Um, so I went back another couple of years and tried to look at the trend to see, uh, last year's, it was down a little bit for some whatever reason, but, um, it's continually increasing and increasing each year, so we can see what the toll is on our police and fire for the number of calls, so it's just kind of, it's interesting to keep an eye on those. The only other thing I'll add is we, last week, we had the, Whitley was in the office starting our audit for last year. Um, we will be hopefully ahead of schedule or on schedule this year, so, uh, our preference should not cause any issue anymore, so, um, I think we're on track. Janet's shaking her head, so, yeah. We're on track, so, any questions?
Very good. Thank you, Teresa, we appreciate that. Okay, we're going to move on now to the mayor's report, and I'm going to step over here to the podium for just a moment. Well, a couple things, uh, as the mayor, we have, um, some people ask me, they say, "Well, how does it feel to be mayor?" And I say, "Well, I've been into it now for six or seven weeks, and there's days I feel like I went to Ikea and bought a box of something and brought it home, and there's no instructions for assembling it, so, so sometimes you have some challenges, but I really appreciate the staff, I appreciate Teresa's help, I appreciate Pete's help, uh, our, um, deputy city clerk, Janet, I can resource her, get some insights, I appreciate that." So things, I think, are moving along, uh, well. We've had a chance to meet with all the departments, uh, I have not met every employee, that's still on my list, uh, we've got some, some things that, um, are going to be fun, the fire department, I talked to the fire chief, and we're going to invite each of the council members to come have a supper with the firefighters, and we'll get that arranged here in the next month, and so you can bring your spouse along, and, because we always smell a lot of good food, and we like to sit down with them at their table and just visit with them one-on-one. I think it's a great opportunity, and they're excited about that, so you're going to be going to have supper with the fire department, uh, so you'll enjoy that. So here we've got a couple things here under Positively Princeton. Um, it was a tremendous weekend, lots of activities in Princeton. Is there something you, if you were bored, there, there was no excuse for that, there's just something going on. So right now, we're going to do this, we have Victoria Yepsen come up, and she's with the Princeton Tourism, and she's our director, and she's going to discuss what's happening around town. Victoria?
Sure. Thank you for having me. Um, I'm quite a bit here, because there's a lot of things coming up this summer. Um, I am still feeling a bit of a high from the community spirit over the weekend, I don't know about all of you. We had, um, a very successful first street concert on Friday, as well as Beethanak Festival weekend, and I think we also can agree that Princeton's the place to be this summer. Um, I'd like to again thank Teresa, Quinn, Tom, Jeff, Scott, and their teams for the success of this weekend. I want to share that it's been quite an eye-opening experience working side by side with city, city staff and employees. The average Princetonian gets to enjoy all the city's hard work and planning, but might not be aware of all the behind-the-scenes action that takes place to create memory-making experiences for all who live and visit here. So I will be praising these departments every chance I get. Um, we have another exciting weekend ahead with the annual Z-Tour Bike Ride, which Maureen will be speaking about, so I won't go too far into detail there. Um, to kick that off, the Bike Place is throwing their first annual Bike Fest at Rotary Park this Friday, June 24th. Um, fun begins at 1:00 PM with a bike swap, bike show, food trucks, and live music. Um, the live music will start at 5:00 and wrap up at 9:00. And following the Fourth of July weekend, we have our second street concert on June 30th, um, with Terrence Samien and Azadago Experience. He is now a two-time Grammy winner. Um, he was actually our first official street concert, so it's very exciting to have him back. Um, if you look up any videos of him, you just can't stop yourself from smiling watching him. Um, he rocks out on the accordion, so it'll be a night rich in culture and fun. Um, and I also wanted to plug a couple of organizations that have things going on all summer. Um, if you have not checked out the community band, um, at Soldiers and Sailors Park, be sure to catch them. Um, their band is bigger than ever and a great way to wrap up your busy summer weekend under the trees at Soldiers and Sailors Park. Um, their remaining concerts are July 2nd, 9th, 23rd, and 30th at 6:00 PM. Um, also, Tuesday, July 4th, the Princeton Area Chamber of Commerce and the Park District have teamed up to give us a day of fireworks, food, and live music at Zearing Park. Um, they have more details on their Facebook page, so be sure to check that out. And finally, I'd like to give a plug to Festival 56 as they're celebrating their 20th year this summer. Um, I, I feel we should all be shouting from the rooftops that, that we have a professional theater in town. Um, this is another thing that makes Princeton unique from other communities our size, and, um, it serves as a launchpad for a lot of artists to go on to Broadway and major television shows, and it also is a landing place for all these artists to come back because Princeton feels like home. And I hope next, uh, next time we have a meeting here, I can, um, have one of the actors come and talk about that. Um, their, uh, first show is the Million Dollar Quartet, which opens Jul-, um, June 24th and goes through July 1st, and, um, followed by Significant Other, Footloose, and Something Rotten. And the Shakespeare in the Park this year is a Wild West take on Twelfth Night, so that'll be fun and interesting. And I think that's all for me, I could go on and on. Um, thanks for letting me brag about Princeton.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, great. Um, a couple things, uh, last week I was, um, somebody said, "Hey, did you hear about Safety Town?" I said, "Man," I said, "I'm, that's off my radar," I said, "I know it's a great, uh, program." "Oh, yeah," they said, "we've got a, a little granddaughter, and she's so excited, she's four, and she's going to Safety Town," and it was her third day, and she had already learned things, and, and went back home and told her grandmother, wow, things about Safety Town. So I thought, let's go back and, let's look at the origins of Safety Town, let's see actually who, who sponsored Safety Town, what, how does Safety Town come together? And really, it's, it's just one small part of the Princeton Junior Women's Club. So tonight, we're going to have two representatives from the Princeton Junior Women's Club come up and speak about their organization as well as Safety Town. We have Tricia Schaefer and Gail Jagers. If you'd like to come up, ladies, we're glad to have you.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to come here and share information about the Princeton Junior Women's Club, and then I'm going to let Gail take over and tell you more about Safety Town. Um, Princeton Junior Women's Club, PJWC for short, was founded in 1971 by Lou Brown and was started with 37 members. Their first year, they gave scholarships in art, music, and conservation. PJWC averages about 15 members right now with women from the Princeton area, 18 years and above, and we are always open to guests and new members. We meet on the second Thursday of each month around 6:00 PM, usually at the Simon Conference Center located at 446 Town Place. The Princeton Junior Women's Club is a member of the General Federation of Women's Clubs, GFWC. Founded in 1890, the General Federation of Women's Clubs is one of the oldest, largest, nonpartisan, non-denominational women's volunteer organizations throughout the United States and the world. GFWC headquarters is located in Washington DC near DuPont Circle, and it also houses the GFWC Women's History and Resource Center. GFWC is a unifying force bringing together local women's clubs with their members dedicated to strengthening their communities and enhancing the lives of others through volunteer service. With over 70,000 members in all 50 states and affiliated clubs in more than a dozen countries, GFWC members are community leaders who work locally supporting the arts, preserving natural resources, advancing education, promoting healthy lifestyles, and encouraging civic involvement. Clubs seek and spearhead projects that positively affect their communities. Within GFWC, Illinois is one of the largest state memberships, and Princeton was fortunate to have two GFWC member clubs, the GFWC Women's Club of Princeton, which disbanded just recently in 2020, and the Princeton Junior Women's Club. So here are some notable things from PJWC's history. During its very first year, the club held the first ice cream social at the inaugural Homestead Festival. A bicycle safety check, um, was held, an ecology club was formed at the Princeton High School, and PJWC sponsored the first citywide ecology recycling drive in 1971. And just as a note, um, in 2022, that marked the final ice cream social and dinner for PJWC, after 51 years, the club felt it was time to move forward with other fundraising directions, but that was a long run for a project, um, fundraising and being part of the community. In 1973, coupons were saved for project concern, 325 tree seedlings were sold to schoolchildren for 10 cents each, and 75 were sold to the public. Baskets for people in need were given at Christmas, and in 1975, the club worked to retain the brick streets in Princeton, held an arts and crafts show at the fairgrounds, which continued on for many years, and the PJWC baby contest was held for the first time during Homestead Festival. As you can see, the Princeton Junior Women's Club volunteers were determined from the start to make a difference in the Princeton area. Over the years, we have had babysitting clinics, library story hours, scholarships were given to high school students, a Halloween party for the teens at Second Story, we've donated to schools, nursing homes, hospital, the hospital, um, the fire department, our police department, Gateway Services, redecorated rooms for Freedom House, and much more. PJWC continues each year to donate thousands of dollars to our community. We hold the baby contest during, um, Princeton's Homestead Festival. We run Safety Town, which teaches preschoolers all aspects of safety. We donate to the fireworks, give scholarships, donate funds, and supply birthday bags to the food pantries in our area, and the list goes on and on. PJWC participates in the national GFWC projects as well. As their signature program is domestic and sexual violence awareness and prevention, in 2018, PJWC launched the Princeton Purple Pumpkin Project. Tricky say. In coordination with Tanner Orchard, Tanner's Orchard, um, for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. To date, the project has raised hundreds of dollars for Freedom House, and through the club's effort, they've been nationally recognized, um, in GFWC through their magazine and through their newsletters, so that other clubs can learn from PJWC's success. Being Advocates for Children is another national project, and I'm sure over the years you've seen PJWC's Pinwheel Garden of Blue Pinwheels pop up in April, um, to bring awareness to Prevent Child Abuse Awareness Month. Two of PJWC's newest projects just this last year are Keep the Lights On for Santa, where the club donated funds to the city of Princeton to help with utility bills overdue in the month of December, in order for families to have a better holiday season. And the Extra Program, where we partnered with Princeton High School. In March, April, and May of 2023, the club gave money to be added to, to select number of lunch accounts to allow those students to buy a few extra items from the school cafeteria. The Princeton Junior Women's Club continues to work to help their community, state, nation, and world be a better place, and I do personally, um, believe that, you know, what makes our community, um, our hometown is volunteering, and that we're really blessed here in Princeton for all the volunteers that we do have in our community.
And Ray asked me to talk a little bit about Safety Town, because we just finished that up on Friday. Um, so Safety Town is a two-week program that is taught by a certified teacher and also Officer Friendly, who is a school resource officer for the Princeton Police Department. And I mean, thank, um, thank you for letting us borrow him for two weeks. Um, the program, again, is sponsored by PJWC, and it consists of daily classroom training in conjunction with outdoor safety demonstrations and practice. So you can imagine 30 four- and five-year-olds on big wheels, driving around and trying to know when they're supposed to stop and not run over any of the other students in the class. Um, Officer Wolf, he has a stoplight that we run, and the students that are circling around must stop at the stoplight, wait for pedestrians, so we're teaching them how to do that. So right now, uh, Safety Town is held at Douglas School, so we painted our streets on their playground. Um, again, Safety Town is open for four- and five-year-olds, um, and it is held usually every June. So we started Safety Town in 1976, so we've been running it for 47 years. So it's kind of funny, usually the first day of Safety Town, I ask, um, the parents, because I meet with them first, "Have any of you been in Safety Town?" And I'll get, you know, 10 or 15 hands, so generational, we now have the younger generation of, of students coming through, so that's kind of cool to see. After the two weeks is up, on the last day, we have a graduation program, and so we invite all the parents, grandparents, and uncles, brothers, sisters, whoever wants to come, and the kids show, uh, show them what they learned on the street and also what they learned in the classroom. During this two-week program, we do have speakers come in to talk to the students. Luke Kong teaches them how to do 911, and, uh, they practice their 911 dialect. Um, Freedom House comes in and does a stranger danger program. OSF comes in and does poison control, and it's pretty cool. I love her presentation, because she'll bring bags, and it'll, it'll be like two bags of gummy bears, and she'll say, "Now, can you tell the difference between these bags of gummy bears? Well, you really can't. Well, one's truly gummy bears, and the other one really is not gummy bears, but they look the same." But she's trying to teach them, don't taste or touch or do anything without asking parents first. Um, the fire department and the police department come, and they bring all their vehicles, and they let the kids tour them, um, and run the sirens. So maybe you a couple weeks ago heard a lot of sirens going off around Littleton and Dirty, um, have the kids practicing that. Um, and also PES, um, gives us a bus to use, and we teach the kids how to ride on a bus safely. Um, this year, our program was taught by Erica Lemonhan, she's one of the preschool teachers over at Douglas, and then Officer Tyler Wolf was our Officer Friendly for the two weeks. We had 30 students, we had 16 teen volunteers from the high school, and they earned around 30 service hours, um, to help us with this project. And so that's pretty much the, the wrap of Safety Town, um, so we'll hopefully continue that on in years to come. Um, we need a little work for our buildings, and, um, we'll be working on that through the year, so, um, with that, uh, thank you for letting us come and talk about it.
Wow, thank you very much. So many good things going on in Princeton, and it's a lot of work for these volunteers. 47 years at Safety Town, and you think about Officer, uh, Wolf, he's a great match, he's just a nice young man, he's got lots of kids himself, three or four, and he's got a, uh, so it's great, you know, it's all a win-win. We're going to wrap up our evening, and we're going to ask, um, the Zearing Child Enrichment Center, the director is Lauren Whitmer, and Lauren's going to come tonight and just give a little bit of a brief, uh, history about Zearing Enrichment Center, um, and then talk a little bit about the Z-Tour, so Lauren, we're glad to have you, please come up.
Thanks for having me.
You're welcome.
I don't know how I can follow up after all that happened. Awesome. I know a lot of our kids come, and they're like, "This was the best day ever," when they come and do Safety Town, I've heard great things about it over and over. Um, so yes, thank you for having me. Um, I'll just give a little snippet about Zearing first, and then I'll jump and then I'll jump over to Z Tour and kind of talk a little bit about that. Um, we've been in business since nineteen seventy-four. Uh, we started out very small in a church setting. Um, and over the years, the cities grew. They found that the need for our town grew for early childhood. Um, and eventually, we were, um, gifted a large sum to be able to build the building that we're actually in now um, because they knew that the need was so great for our community to have, um, a full-day program for working families. Um, so we can have about a hundred and forty-nine students in our program, and we have six weeks through twelve years of age. Our main focus would be about six weeks to five years old. We spend a lot of time with our curriculum and assessment and, um, screening the children and just keeping them on track. Um, but in a full-day setting versus just a shorter program. Um, we are the only program in town that's a full-day, um, option for preschool, and we start all of that learning at that six weeks of age. So, uh, we just know we're very important for the community because we're the only ones where working families hold a license by, um, the state of Illinois. And beyond the licensing standards that are required of us, we also have joined the Accelerate Illinois Program, and we hold a Silver Circle of Quality. Um, and that just basically means we go above and beyond the standards of what licensing says that you have to do for your classroom, for your curriculum, you know, assessing the kids and all of that. Um, our teachers have to be a little bit higher qualified than you would, um, if you were just at that licensing level. So, um, yeah, and then we have our before and after-school program, um, that serves, you know, kindergarten through generally around fifth grade. They kind of get sick of us and they want to leave, um, which is fair. They want to go, you know, enjoy the beautiful town. They like to ride their bikes around and meet up with their friends and have a good time. So, um, which is why Safety Town is so great, nice and young, they can learn all the things. Um, so yeah, we do that, and then during the summer and the holidays and stuff, we have them with us, um, with the school and session. So that's basically us, uh, for Zearing. Uh, Z Tour, though, is a fundraiser that was started eleven years or so ago, um, by our Board of Directors. And it's a big bike ride that brings everybody to town. And all the proceeds come back to the center, and we are so grateful for every single person that's ever had a hand in it because there's so many people that have helped us over the years. Um, and it is an event that we could not, you know, do ourselves, so there's just a lot of people that put their hands into it. Um, but yeah, we started out, you know, just a couple hundred riders in the beginning. Um, every year, we've kind of grown from there. COVID kind of set us back, like it set back a lot of things. But, um, last year was our first year back in person, and we had three hundred and twenty-four riders. And this year, we're hoping for at least five hundred. Um, and I think we're set to, you know, hopefully reach that goal. Um, we're at about two ninety right now, so that's pretty good for that beforehand. Um, we get a lot of our riders, they want to wait for that weather. You know, if it's going to be a rainy day, they don't always like to come, but usually the hot, they don't mind. They're like, ah, we'll just pack extra water. Um, but at the event, it's really fun. Um, you know, you, there's all different rides. There's the shorter routes, like eleven miles or so, um, and you can go all the way up to a hundred miles. And it's all throughout the different counties in Princeton. This year, we're going to Wynette Bureau, Tiscua, and we're visiting all those different areas with our riders. Um, and then they, they get to stop and get their drinks and snacks and all of that throughout the entire ride. And then by the time they get back to us, we serve them an end-of-ride meal. And we play music. They can just have a good time. We're having some massage therapists come this time. Um, and then we also had Rick Brooks help kind of run this whole Bike Fest thing that he came up with and just kind of put it in conjunction with us. So it's kind of great to have somebody like him who has all these awesome ideas, be able to pull the community together to help us come up with other ways to, you know, tie our event to the town. So, yeah, that's about it.
It's exciting.
It is exciting. There's a lot of good stuff happening, so.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Okay, so we're going to wrap up our segment called Positively Princeton. I think that the, uh, unifying word I would say is vol-, is volunteerism. It's amazing how Princeton Junior Women's Club operates, uh, with volunteers and the history that they've had, the Zearing Enrichment Center with, uh, the volunteers to make something like the Z Tour happen. I know it's, it's literally dozens and dozens of people that might be out getting the course all set up, sweeping off, uh, the turns where bikers have to make that turn, and you give rid of that loose gravel, things like that. Then you got the watering station, and I'm sure the firefighters are there to help with, uh, the, and then the police department's there for traffic control. So a lot going on. Thank you for coming tonight and sharing your story. I'll go back over to my, my normal spot over here. Okay, we're down to any old business. Are there any old businesses this evening? Okay, is there any new businesses this evening?
I want to make one note. Um, on Saturday, the Tree Committee will be planting, I'm sure, the total number of trees um, in, on Gossi Boulevard over by the, um, fairgrounds. There's a section of roads, there's a, a boulevard that goes down the middle. Uh, what they're hoping to do is if anybody from the community is interested in some training on how to properly plant the trees, properly mulch the trees, properly wire the trees, they, they want you to feel free to come out. So, uh, we'll get, get the word out on that, but the trees will be coming in this week. The committee will be there to help plant and, uh, will help with the training. So that'll be the start of the new trees coming in this year, and we'll have to water them.
That's, that's fantastic. And that Gossi Boulevard, I know that's from, basically, um, the section is from Prue Street going, uh, north, uh, that two-block stretch that is pretty devoid of trees, so that's a great spot to start. Very good. Thank you, Teresa. Appreciate that. Okay, we're to public comments. Are there any public comments this evening? No public comments. Now we're ready to go ahead and ask if you adjourn the meeting.
I'm hoping we adjourn our regular council meeting this evening and, uh, prepare for our next council meeting on Monday, July third, twenty twenty-three, at seven o'clock at City Hall.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Third call rule.
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Gomez?
Aye.
McCall?
Aye.
Lekrinsky?
Aye.
Mayor Mayberry?
Aye. Thank you. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.